My name is Cam Jones. Just wanted to pray a prayer of blessing and wisdom and favor and protection over our school board and thank you for all you do for our students in this community tonight. So, Lord, we love you, we bless you tonight. We thank you, God, for the opportunity and the wisdom that's in this room, God. We pray, the Bible says that wisdom from above is impartial, it's sincere, and, Lord, I pray today that you would give strength and wisdom to this body that's here today. God, we thank you for the wisdom they've already shown, and, God, we pray for special blessings, special favor, God. We pray for opportunity, God, to grow our young people, God, in great ways tonight, Lord, and I pray for perfect unity as we come together, God, in contention, God, for what's best for our kids tonight. So, we thank you, Jesus, and we thank you for each of these that participate and serve on this board tonight. We thank you for your presence and your hand upon this night, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I call to order and welcome you to the Bradley County Board of Education meeting for February the 13th, 2025. In recognizing elected officials, Mr. Collins, Denny Collins, is he here?
Yes.
Always, Bradley County Commission and, of course, Bradley County Schools. Did I miss an elected official? I would say, Mr. Collins, thank you for being here, but I know why you're here, so, welcome. I would also like to recognize the lead fellows, if they would stand, please. Thank you very much for being here, and I had the pleasure of talking to this group, what, Terry, about a week or two ago, and Lynn, and it is just amazing. They had great questions, they're going to do a great job, so thank you so much for I prefer, no, before we start the pledge to the flag, Alan Smith?
Yes, let's stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business is the consent agenda. I have an item that I would like to remove from the agenda. Does anyone else have items that they would like to remove? On advice of counsel, I am requesting that we remove item number seven. Are there any objections to removing item number seven? Do I have a second to the motion?
I have a second, Madam Terry.
I made the motion, Mr. Bryson provided the second. Miranda, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Alan Smith.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Casey.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Now, I am going back to the consent agenda minus item number seven. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, Mr. Taylor, a second, Mr. Smith, any discussion on the consent agenda? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes. Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Rachel Goins?
Yes.
Nancy Casey?
Yes.
Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Vicky Beatty?
Yes.
Alan Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
The next item, persons requesting to address the board on agenda items. It is my understanding that no one signed up to speak on agenda items, so we will go to item six, the Director of Schools Report, Dr. Linda Cash.
Thank you very much. We have quite a bit to report on, but the first one, you will notice, is just by the numbers, and I'm actually gonna recognize prospects principals, Mr. Steve Montgomery, if he'd like to come forward. His school kind of takes the lead on our Make a Change Day, and I really wanted to give him the opportunity to let you know what a success that's been in Bradley County over many years now.
Let me put my glasses on. Good evening, members of the school board, faculty, staff, and community members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today about an initiative that is close to our hearts and will make a real impact in the lives of our students and our families. It's called Make a Change Day. This year, Make a Change Day will happen on March the 7th. On this special day, all Bradley County schools will come together for a one-day fundraising effort aimed at fighting hunger in our community. As educators, we know that hunger is not just a physical burden, it's an obstacle to learning, growth, and opportunity. When students in our schools face food insecurity, they struggle to focus in class, engage with their peers, and reach their full potential. That is why we are committed to Make a Change Day. The funds raised on Make a Change Day will be directed through the United Way to support programs that provide meals and snacks to students on a daily and weekly basis. These programs will ensure that no child goes hungry while trying to learn. The impact of our fundraising efforts will extend beyond the classroom, supporting vital initiatives such as the YCAT program, Boys and Girls Club, the Housing Initiative, and the Kindness Funds, all of which play a crucial role in the well-being of our students. This event is more than just a fundraiser, it is a statement of our shared commitment to caring for one another and fostering a sense of community. We encourage students, parents, teachers, to rally together to support this cause. Whether it's through small donations or large donations, every dollar raised will help raise, will help a child, providing them with the stability and support they need to be successful. I invite each of you to help spread the word, encourage participation, and support our mission. Together, we can make a tangible difference in the lives of our, in the lives of our students and ensure that every child in Bradley County schools has access to the nutrition they need to thrive. Thank you for your time and your continued dedication to the well-being of our students, coming together and making a change, because every child deserves a brighter and healthier future. And please remember, this year, Make a Change Day is on March the 7th, and I'll take any questions. I can tell you that this is our, one, two, three, four, so, this is our eighth year, and we've raised $94,000 through this program, through Collecting Change. But I will also tell you that is a team effort through every school in Bradley County.
We have a video to share just to show you the impact of how everybody contributes to Make a Change Day.
Happy Make a Change Day!
Happy Make a Change Day!
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 Bradley County Schools are coming together to make a real difference in our community.
Start filling this bag, so the handbags can fill up this bag.
This exciting student-led fundraiser empowers us to collect spare change for vital programs that support Bradley County students. Together, we can make a meaningful impact on the lives of children in need with United Way of the Ochoi region. We're talking about weekend meals for kids through the sackpack program, after-school care through the Boys and Girls Club, and stable housing solutions for families in need through Housing United. Each student will receive a bag to collect their spare change, and totals will be calculated for every school once the collection period ends. Make a Change Day has been transforming lives since 2017, and this year, we are on the verge of an incredible milestone in surpassing the $100,000 raised by Bradley County students. Students are at the forefront of this initiative, and we wholeheartedly invite teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and members of the community to join us in supporting this movement.
Every penny counts!
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 Make a Change Day, every penny counts.
So, we encourage you to save your pennies, but we also take other coins and dollars and checks, we'll take checks as well. The other thing that I want to say is thank you to Charleston Elementary for hosting our roadshow success. I think we had a great time, and Commissioner Reynolds actually showed up, and she is still talking about that, highlighting this week and last week, we had our Steered Straight program where we had a guest speaker come in and talk to our middle and high schools about the dangers of vaping and making better choices, and we want to appreciate the support from Wright Brothers Construction on that. We, that was an amazing piece, and thank you to all my administrators and families who came out for the parent night. That was, that was just really great. We're not finished, we'll still continue our campaign to protect our kids, but your presence was noticed and appreciated. Just a couple of other things, I want you, under noteworthy happenings, to look at our wonderful elementary counselors who actually went to support families in packing sackpacks, and then a generous donation from the Botman Foundation for our equine therapy, which is amazing, it happens on Thursdays, and then, of course, we have our lead fellows. So, all the great things that happen are because of all of you, and so we want to thank you for that, and Ms. Beatty, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash and Mr. Montgomery. Our next item, Bradley Cleveland Public Education Annual Update, Chris Aniano?
Aniano.
Aniano.
Aniano, President of the Executive Committee and Lynn Voels, Executive Director.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time to come before the board and present on our mid-year update. As you'll see in the slides, we've been, we've been kind of in this partnership for over 21 years now, and that's fantastic with the shared mission of, if you can go to the next one, raising community awareness, gaining financial support, enhancing teaching and learning. Throughout this partnership, the impact is tremendous, eleven and a half million dollars of private financial monies coming into public education, allowing over 1,500 educators to pursue innovative and collaborative measurable education impact for over 16,000 students. And not only is that impact measurable, but I can assure you, it is measured and it is reported back to those who contribute, and that is, that's just a fantastic process that's used throughout. These, these monies and through this grant process, of course, enhance the teaching and the learning in our public education, and I don't have to tell anyone here how foundationally critical public education is to a prosperous community. This strategic collaboration has built relationships, and it is, it's critical that we continue to partner and share in the vision and the planning that goes on. In fact, our executive committee just recently met about a week and a half ago and kicked off the revitalization of our five-year strategic plan, so that will be going on. We have a full-day session planned in June, and actually, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Lynn Voels and let her continue the mid-year update for you.
Thank you, Chris Aniano. Did I get it?
Yes.
Okay, how many times do I have to say it? Thank you, Chris.
Madam Chairman and board members, thank you for letting us be here. I might say that Laura Aniano is an educator at Charleston Elementary Steam Academy, and we're fortunate to have Chris on our board.
I knew I'd heard that name somewhere.
Yes, that's right, that's exactly right. You know a lot about Bradley Cleveland Public Education Foundation, so I just am updating you mid-year. As you know, we meet as a joint board in July or August, early August, but we want, you see me here every month, but we want you to know what's going on mid-year as well, and so that's why we're standing here tonight, taking your time. We gave the update to the Cleveland City Board a week and a half ago, and I told them I would only take an hour and a half, and I could not stretch this report that long, so you have nothing to worry about. The strategic programs and projects which we support, I want to emphasize that we don't design the programs and projects. The school system, the teachers, the educators design those programs and projects, and so we are very strategic in what we support so that the impact is consistent with your objectives. You know about a number of these, and I'll be brief about some of them, the teacher grants. This year, we funded about $80,000 worth of teacher grants, and I'll come back to that in a few minutes, but they, well, let me just finish right now. They are important because the teachers design the programs that they want for their school and for their classrooms. A few years ago, we began funding team grants instead of individual grants, and that has been marvelous because we have seen the impact just dramatically increase. So, the 19 grants this year, 16 schools, but the subjects of those grants are expanding. Some years ago, we were primarily providing technology, as you know, but when the schools invested in that, the teachers began looking elsewhere for monies for more innovative programs. So, this year, we had world history, U.S. history, ancient civilization grants, STEM, of course, math skill building, theatrical STEM engagement, interesting, music, both, all three, wind, percussion, and strings, three different programs, literacy, robotics, and skill building for students, and this is interesting because it combined communication, problem-solving, critical thinking, collaboration, and teamwork. And I'm eager to visit the school and see the impact on the kids. They'll have reports for us, I'm sure, and then art, community, there's going to be a community-wide art project with students as professional curators, so I'm eager to see that, too. That's gonna be combined with a downtown Cleveland event. The lead fellowship, I'm gonna come back to that in a few minutes. We budgeted $90,000 for that this year. Telemedicine, I'm gonna come back to that in a minute, too, it's remarkable. Teacher awards, the Lilly F. Fitzgerald Excellence in Teaching Award, represented by that board here, you know, that's done every year, and we sometimes almost forget about it because those awards are given at the convocation at the beginning of the year. Well, Rodney and Margot Fitzgerald started this many years ago with a $3,000 award for teachers. This year, for one teacher, right, this year, they gave the award to each system, a teacher in each system, $7,000. Now, it's not just the money. In December, we hosted right here in this room a reception for the recipients of this award, and there were about 20 of them here, and Margot and Rodney attended by Zoom, and what really surprised me was the teachers began coming up to the microphone and talking to them about the impact of that award, and, you know, I think it's, I thought it was a financial and maybe impact in their classroom. There were about four teachers who said, "This award made me assess my educational commitment, it made me take my teaching to another level, it stimulated me to be better." Now, that really moved me, and of course, it really moved Rodney and Margot as well. I talked with Rodney today, they're instituting, as you know, they now live in Collierville, I'm going to see them in two weeks, and he's got me speaking to their foundation, of course, but he is starting an Excellence in Teaching Award at the Collierville High, of Collierville City Schools. So, they are, they remain committed to us, they remain committed to education in that region, and it's just wonderful to know those people. The golf award was given the second time this year, and that is a Cleveland City Schools Award honoring a longtime educator as well. Scholarships, we administer seven, most of them are related to either students who have died by accident or educators, and so they're always a joy to administer and to meet the students to whom they're awarded. Other programs, we've funded this year about $77,000 with also targeted, some targeted professional development. We really like to fund team professional development rather than individual, because what we see back in the schools is just remarkable. Last year, we funded team professional development for a team from Ochoi and Lake Forest, and they began collaborating more, they began, they developed relationships at this professional development, and it was very productive, it was a great investment. Our total year-to-date as of December 31st was $215,000. Now, you know, we've had a couple million-dollar years, and I like that, I love to see that, but we need the programs and projects from you. We're working on some things right now that are exciting and innovative, and so I look for more dollars on the bottom line by the end of the year. Let me start with the lead fellowship here, or continue with the lead fellowship, excuse me. This is our third year. As you can see, we have 12 fellows, they represent 11 different schools, and you can see the schools up there, interesting, and they are an exceptional group, are they not?[1275.15]
Yes, they are.
They really are.
Yes.
They're cohesive, they're energetic, they're collaborative, and it's been just a joy to be with them. The facilitators, Debbie Torres and Terry Murray, educators that bring expertise and energy and focus and commitment to this group. They've been amazing. And each year, the Fellowship has, frankly, has gotten better because they're committed to it. Megan Allison, wave at them, Megan. She is the admin person from BCPEF that helps coordinate things. Funding, there are two private foundations that fund this. One that has funded it, and we're in its, we're in a fourth year now. They're funding it for one more year. They committed to those five years. The other, the Tucker Foundation, and they literally came to us and said, "We really like the idea of the LEAD Fellowship. If we fund a little more, can you add more fellows?" And so, that's remarkable. I love it when that happens, when that value is seen by donors and by grantors. The Fellowship begins with a reception, and it ends with a final luncheon. And we usually host that luncheon out on Bend About at the cabin, which is a wonderful place. And it allows members of the Tucker Foundation administration to attend, and we always like that. They have a two-day retreat, starting their learning experience, and then 16 day-long sessions over the year. The retreat this year was also exceptional. We held it in Maryville and had a really good time. The speakers were dynamic, to say the least. Dr. Cash and Dr. Elliott spoke with them. And, you know, we see Dr. Cash and Dr. Elliott all the time and have an opportunity to talk with them and interact with them and know what they're thinking and see their heart. Well, that just isn't true for everybody. And so, the feedback we got was they absolutely loved hearing from our two directors because they saw the passion and they saw the commitment. And that is, you can't buy that. You know, that is just wonderful. Additionally, we brought in, if you've seen this journal, there's this page in the journal, which is interesting, and there are some great quotes on here. You'll, I'll, we'll give you a journal at the end of this, but read those quotes. They're so motivating. But the panel that you see there, Bill Emendorfer, David Beckler, and Philip Fulmer, they all know each other and played football together, actually, at the University of Tennessee. And David Beckler, who is a member of our board, of our executive committee, put this together. Well, these gentlemen have had careers, leadership experience in their careers that is almost unparalleled. And they complemented each other, and it was pretty remarkable. We want them back again. They loved it. I actually got a note from Philip Fulmer that said, "Ask me whatever you want to ask me, I'll do it." They enjoyed being with those LEAD fellows. Apparently, these LEAD fellows, however, were texting and sending pictures during the session because then we got texts that said, "Philip Fulmer, really? Can we repeat this next time?" You know, so we, previous LEAD fellows were a little jealous, I might say. Two other individuals who spoke at this retreat, Dr. Andy White, Cleveland State, and Paul Kahn, Dr. Paul Kahn. Again, you know Paul very well. He is motivating, and we always hear, I could listen to him all day whenever he comes and talks. Dr. White talked about measuring the impact of education, tremendously valuable. And I think it was a concept that really hit home with our educators, actually measuring the impact of what we're doing and how important that is. He had spent two years at Belmont, measuring and looking at the impact of community colleges in the state of Tennessee and had some very interesting findings. So, the, what they, this retreat, what it gave to the fellows was pretty remarkable. Good start to the year. Shout out to these two sitting in the front row here. They are remarkable, coordinated school health and the supervisor of all the nurses. I am always amazed at what the nursing, what the nurses do in the schools every year. Last year, there were 130, almost 135,000 nurse visits. I don't, I can't even conceive that. Well, in, let me see here, what year was it? In 2015, yes, 2015, we began working toward putting telemedicine in every single school, and it exists today. And it has made a huge difference in the health of both staff and students. There's more chronic illness in our schools, there's more acute illness, and that telemedicine has just been transformative. A couple of years ago, in 2022, we developed a partnership with Ocoee Pediatrics. Prior to that, Erlinger had worked with us. And the local pediatric clinic has made a huge difference because parents can actually choose to take their children to that clinic if they want to or if they need a medical home. Additionally, Angela Coats and Eddie Coats, who own this, are committed to public education. Angela graduated from the Cleveland City Schools, and Eddie graduated from the Bradley County Schools. They are long-term residents of this community. They're committed, and they have made a huge difference in our ability to provide telemedicine Every year, I have to shout, I have to give a shout out to United Way. They have been with us every step of the way. The Health Initiative Fund has been amazing, and it provides about $70,000 to us every single year for this process. So, we are so grateful for that. They are wonderful partners. Be brief about ArtSmart. It is a fun program. One of our board members, Ki Waller, she is not on our board right now. I think she'll come back at some point, but she wanted to support art in some way. And so, she said, "We have a billboard company. If you can create some art billboards, we will put them up." And so, initially, they gave us one billboard, and we were rotating, you know, about four images on that billboard. Well, at last count, they had us on four billboards.
Wow.
And when we were at Charleston, two weeks ago, one of the little boys talked about ArtSmart, and one of the little students, and he said, "This is a program put on by He said, "So cute." And he said, "My, my art was on that billboard, and it is so wonderful to be famous. Don't you love it? I mean, you know, it's worth it. We see, on occasion, parents and kids sitting in a parking lot, watching for it to come again and again. And so, it's a wonderful program that just reinforces art in our schools." In summary, thank you for the leadership you provide to Bradley County Schools. The system leadership, Dr. Cash and Dr. Elliott, has been transformative, honestly. We have no mission without effective education in the schools. I cannot raise money for no mission. And so, the impact that Linda Cash has had, you know very well. And I experience it on a daily basis because donors say yes to us. This morning, I was at a coffee with a couple of donors, and we were talking about that. And they're eager to hear what's going on, and they're eager to continue the relationship. Our cultivation and solicitation of donors, therefore, is a real pleasure. Each year, we put on Vision 100, as you know, some of you were there. It was the best this year we've ever had, the most guests, the best venue because it was expansive enough for us to invite more people. We raised more money than we have any other year, and I'm grateful for that. Gifts, Grants, and Gratitude is our annual luncheon, when we bring donors and recipients together, education, educators and the donors together. And they sit at table together, have lunch. And I have always, I always hear, I just wanted to cry through the whole thing because I was so moved at what has happened with my investment. Every single year, I hear that. Our facility has served us extremely well. Academic year-to-date, we have hosted 40 meetings there for educators. And so, we're really grateful that they can use that to get off-site, to have a creative time, for us to serve them soda and water and whatever, juice. And they feel cared for, and we love that. And we hear again and again that they like to come there, and we love that. That's part of our mission as well. Chris represented our executive committee tonight. As you know, we have the ability to have 19 voting members. We currently have 15. We have a committee that's looking at options for increasing it. And we'll, you'll know about that when we meet with you at the annual meeting in July or early August because you approve the slate of officers that they bring to you, or slate of committee members, excuse me. Our staff, I have, I'm the full-time person. I work with five part-time people. They're amazing. We put out a lot of work. Year-to-date, we have worked with 2.12 FTEs. So, it's not unusual for me to have 11-hour days. I love it. I think it's purposeful, the mission is worthy, and I get to collaborate with all of you. What's not to like, right? So, thank you, thank you, thank you for your investment in us, for your investment in education, and for your commitment to public education because it is absolutely critical to the foundation of a prosperous community. We have a gift for you. This book that we're going to give you was given, I gave it to the LEAD fellows for a Christmas gift, and some of them thought, "Oh, my gosh, now I have to read a book over my Christmas break." Well, it is pretty remarkable. Admiral William McRaven.
Thank you, ma'am.
I want to, I want to just give you an intro to it. Admiral William McRaven is the bullfrog, so that's not a joke, Wisdom of the Bullfrog. The longest-serving SEAL is called the bullfrog. You remember, they were frogmen before they became, before they renamed them SEALs. So, he was the bullfrog. And this gentleman was in the SEAL, in Special Forces for 37 years. He served 37 years in Special Forces and led the SEALs for many years and was responsible for design and execution of the bin Laden capture and death. So, and after he left the SEALs, he became commissioner of the University of Texas system. So, he has probably encountered every leadership issue one could encounter. And so, I hope you enjoy that book. It is the best book on leadership I've ever read, and the LEAD fellows obviously concur because they're.
Nodding their heads, right.
Yes. So, thank you again for letting us come and share this time with you. Any questions for me? Or, yes, Teddy?
Might not ought to ask it, but when does your luncheon go be attended here?
I'm sorry?
Your luncheon that you have.
April 25th. April 25th, it'll be, and you'll be receiving an invitation.
Where will it be?
April, April 25th. Gifts, Grants, and Gratitude.
At.
At. We're hosting it again at Westmore Youth Building because it's such a great facility for, with the breakout rooms. We can have teachers and students there demonstrating the grant that they received, and they love it, and we love it.
I would just like to say thank you. I have watched this organization grow, probably, was it 2000 or was it, when did, I should know, when was the beginning of the public foundation?
2004.
2004.
Yes, and then I, I've been there since '09, so it's been a long time.
Well, it is phenomenal, and each year, it does seem to get better and better, and the impact that you have on teachers and staff members and students and the community. I am always just blown away with things that you host and the people that I meet there. So, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
And Ziana.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And Lynn, and the LEAD fellows. I've only worked with them the last couple of years, just going over and talking with them, and it is amazing to me, the leadership and just the passion that they have. So, great job. Thank you.
Your presentation got rave reviews.
Oh, well, that's right, of course. Thank you. Thank you. Our next business item, Capital Outlay Committee Appointment. The chair and the vice chair typically serve on this committee. So, at this time, I would like to appoint myself and Mr. Bryson to the Capital Outlay Committee for '25, '26. Mr. Bryson, are you accepting of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The next business item, transfer of ownership for Bus Route Number Two, Terry McElhaney, but my understanding is something came up, so Dr. Cash.
Yes. So, in your packet, you actually have a letter from Mr. McElhaney, but I will tell you, it is a request to transfer ownership of Bus Route Two for the proposed transfer from Willie Dean Malone to Robert Malone effective February 14th, 2025. If there, and I would like to put that in the, ask for a motion for that transfer.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Mr. Bryson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Smith and Ms. Kason. Any discussion or questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Alan Smith.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion passes.
Our next item, bids. Ocoee Middle School Stairway Lift, Chuck McKay.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Bids are fun. This, I wrote, I reached out to five different elevator companies, the main ones, and we put it in the paper two times, and, two different papers, sorry, and we put it on our website. And we had the pre-bid meeting, and one company showed up, and one company bid, and I'll give you that number, if it's your will, to approve their, the lift they want to put in at Ocoee Middle. The price is $32,327, and it's to replace an existing lift there. I doubt that it's been used very much, but, there any, Mr. Bryson?
Since we didn't get any other bids. You're a pretty smart man dealing in this stuff. Is, do you believe that to be a fair price?
Very good, very good.
You know, you've dealt with this.
Yes, yes. I was originally quoted 50 or 55, and that's what I had on that line item for this, so we are way under budget.
Since we didn't get any other bids.
Yeah, yeah, we did not get any other bids.
And that price, again, is?
Thirty-two thousand, $327, and they're the same company who had the lift before, and they have two others in the building already.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the bid from United Elevator Services for Ocoee Middle School Stairway Lift?
I'll make a motion to approve Ocoee Middle's lift.
I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bryson, a second by Mr. Taylor. Do we have any discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Rachel Owens.
Yes.
Alan Smith.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no motion passes.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Our next item, announcements, and there are several. February the 14th, 2025 is an abbreviated school day, that's tomorrow. February the 17th, schools will be closed for President's Day. February the 20th, Bradley County Schools Road Show at Taylor Elementary. February the 22nd will be a board retreat. February the 25th, Bradley County Schools Job Fair at the PIE Innovation Center from 4:00 until 5:30. March the 4th, Arnold Choir Concert at First Baptist Church at 6:30. March the 6th, Kindergarten Rocks and New Student Night at all Bradley County Elementary Schools. March the 7th, Make-A-Change Day, and of course, I was going to ask Dr. Cash to talk about that, but they have already done that, she and Mr. Montgomery. March the 10th through the 14th, schools will be closed, spring break. March the 20th is the next board meeting at 5:00 in this room. April the 24th, we do have a budget work session that has been added for the board. April the 24th, a budget work session. We don't have a time for that yet, do we? Okay. Miranda will be getting in touch with you, a board work session. And then, we have April the 25th, Gifts, Grants, and Gratitude. Okay. And we will be getting information on that. May the 1st, our, our regular meeting in May was May the 15th. We have moved it back to May the 1st due to graduations and probably more activities than I could get on this page. And then, the June board meeting was scheduled for June the 10th, and we've moved it back, or June the 12th, and we have moved it back to June the 10th at 5:00. So, any other announcements or comments about these announcements?
I have a question. Scope is, I've got it on my calendar, I believe it's the first week of March. Okay. And are both of our high schools going?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And when is it, Ms. Kason?
March.
It's the Monday and Tuesday of spring break.
Monday and Tuesday of spring break. Okay.
Yeah, I know, that's the reason I was checking to be sure that we had students going.
Also, I want to mention the girls' basketball state champion is the week of spring break, and we're hoping that our girls go back again this year.
Yes, we certainly do. Now, tell me a little bit, where is it in?
McLaughlin House, MTSU.
MTSU, okay. Yes, we sure do. So, thank you. Anything else? Any agenda items for the next meeting? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.